Okay. Welcome. Can people hear me down there? All right. Thank you, everyone, for coming. It's nice to see everyone here.
We'll be a little closer.
Oh, okay. Is this better? There we go. Nice to see everyone here. Hi, kids. It's great to be at your -- is this your first board meeting? No, you're experienced. That's awesome. Okay, we love that. Okay. So, tonight is a little bit of a special board meeting for us because we are starting for our next new board. So, some of the people up here are at their first board meeting, sitting up here, too. So, that's the first order of business for us today. So, I'm just going to start by asking for a motion to approve the agenda. Okay, David? Thank you. Do I have a second? Stephanie? All right, thank you. So, are there any amendments to the agenda? I have one. Does anyone else have an amendment? Okay. I'm amending the agenda such that at 8:30, I'm going to call it time certain, we're going to have a visit from Mayor Weinberger, who wanted to come tonight and give us a bit of a kickoff hello as well. So, I'm pleased to do that. In deference to his schedule, I'm going to say that at about 8:30, regardless of what is happening, we'll take a quick break so that we can go over and he can talk with us for a few minutes and then we'll slip back into our normal agenda. All right? Yes, David?
I don't have a second.
Okay. Great. All right. So, not hearing any other agendas. I would note that generally, the first thing that happens at a meeting is the very first thing, kids, is that you or anyone else that wanted to talk would get up and make comments to us. But tonight, because it's a special meeting where we're kicking off our new board, we're going to start with something else first and then we will move into that. So, the first thing -- oh, yes. Okay. I have to actually do a few things. First, I have to make sure everyone's here. So, I'm going to say people's names if you can raise your hand. Mark Barlow. Lauren Barabacia. Brian Chena. Liz Currie. Kyle Dodson.
Here.
Ann Judson. She is not here tonight. Susan Marie Harrington. David Kirk. Kat Kleeman. Okay, not here. Mark Porter.
Here.
Stephanie Seguino.
Here.
Maryam Stol. And do we have either student Xander Long or Georgia Essig here? Actually, I -- either here tonight?
Georgia.
There, hey, Georgia. Hi. Okay. So, actually --
Here comes Kat now.
Oh, here comes Kat now. So, actually, we have to say the Pledge of Allegiance, don't we not? Yes. So, let's start right now and we will say the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
This is not tonight. Who's going to do that first?
We'll bring up the attorney and ask him to swear in everybody.
First?
Okay. Perfect. Thanks. So, who does this, though? Who actually does the swearing?
We'll have call on our attorney.
Okay. So, we should do that first, right now?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Is Joe McNeil here?
It's not Joe McNeil, it's Joe.
Joe McNeil is abroad.
Oh, okay.
As a respective fill-in, Joe Fernum, from the firm of McNeil, LeDdy and Sheen.
Okay, and would that be you?
That's me.
Excellent. Thank you, Joe. All right. So, the first thing we do in this new special meeting is that we all get sworn in. So, I'm going to ask Joe to do that. Come on up.
If you could all just repeat after me, thank you. You have an opportunity to state your names immediately. Most of you have been through this already. I --
Aye. -- do solemnly swear or affirm Do solemnly swear or affirm
-- that I will faithfully execute the office, duty, or trust
That I will faithfully execute the office, duty, or trust
-- of the Burlington Board of School Commissioner
Of the Burlington Board of School Commissioner
-- to the best of my judgment and ability
To the best of my judgment and ability
-- according to law
According to law
-- so help me God or under the pains and penalties of perjury
So, help me under the pains and penalties of perjury.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, that's all good. What do we have? Chair?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So, the first order of business is the election of a chair. For those of you that don't know, this is the person that will preside over the meetings for the next year. So, they'll sit up in this seat where I'm sitting now and they will run the meetings. So, I'd like to entertain a motion or a suggestion for chair. We will need a second after we --
I'd like to nominate Mark Porter for chair.
Have a second. Brian Chena, seconds. Okay. As the motion maker, would you like to make any comments?
Well, I think for those of us who were on the board last year with Mark, he needs no introduction for this, but he has -- he was a significant part of the search for our interim superintendent, Smith. Mark has extensive executive experience, I think is an important qualification. He has excellent skills in terms of making sure everybody's voice is heard and overall, I think, would be a superb chair for the board during the next year.
Any other comments? Questions?
I just want to add that I think it's really important that we think about the roles that we have as a board and think about the skills to do that. And to second, Stephanie, I was just super impressed. Mark and I shared the commissioner work of Ward One and I was actually, like a little fire, under my butt was lit by the fact that Mark was always on it. He was the person who was saying, hey, Kyle, we should go meet up at the hospital and have an opening so we can talk to people. He wanted us, we -- it turned out, we didn't do it, but he was like, hey, let's take a little bit of our money, you do this, you do that, we'll make some flyers so that the people in our ward are aware of what's going on. That kind of responsibility and sense of duty, really, around the work was, is part of what makes me think that he'll serve this post-low.
Hearing no other comments? All right. Well, let's go ahead and take a vote on the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Motion passes. Well, we can't abstain. You can only abstain if you're not here or you have a conflict of interest. And I'm assuming no one has a conflict of interest on this point. So, no abstentions? Okay. Okay. So, with that said, congratulations, Mark Porter, our new chair. Please come on up.
Take care.
I will take my name tag. That was fun.
Do I have a motion for anyone? Brian?
I'd like to nominate Liz Currie.
Do I have a second? Stephanie? Thank you. Any discussion? So, I will do this. The -- I would support Liz. There's a piece of tenaciousness that I just appreciate. We do not often see eye to eye, and that's fine. That's what this board is made up of. But I know that we have large challenges ahead of us this year to bring a lot of things in line and that having a clerk that has some institutional knowledge would be a great thing. So, I do support Liz and certainly, I'm open for discussion on this. Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of Liz Currie maintaining the position of clerk signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, Liz. Did the approval with Janet, right? Yeah, okay. So, the -- we are going to try to do our best to keep this confined today, tonight. I think -- Maryam, you said 20 minutes?
We have student presentation first.
Right. I just want to make sure that we have --
You're putting in and out of the mic. It's hard to hear you.
No, I'm not, really.
Really, it is.
So, we're going to have the -- the next presentation is the Communicating, Collaborating, and Creating with Janet Belavance, Heather McMorris, and the second grade students from Evans Elementary School. You're up.
Hi, welcome. My name is Amy Trushon. I'm a Technology Integration Specialist here in the district, predominantly working with the elementary-level teachers. The past two years, our department has offered a graduate course called From Substitution to Transformation: Purposeful Integration of the iPads in the Elementary Classroom. Janet and Heather took this course two years ago and they took it as a team and they each received six iPads for each of their classrooms. The work their students will be sharing tonight reflects models of best practices of technology integration in the elementary classroom.
Hi, I'm Janet Belavance and I teach second grade at Evans Elementary with Heather McMorris. Thanks for having us here tonight. Our goal is to give students opportunities to use technology as a tool to create, communicate, and collaborate.
And tonight, we're going to show you two examples of how technology is transforming our classrooms. There are many more, so we encourage you to check out our website, go to the curriculum tab, look at all the amazing work of second graders. And so, now I'm turning it over to the students.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Cunningham. In our math class, we created ebooks with our math partners to show and explain our understanding of the standards for place values. We use videos, photos, and other apps to show our thinking. Now, Mason and Jack will show you an example of our ebooks called Making Our Thinking Visible.
I thought that might happen.
Making Our Thinking Visible Place Value. My Jackass and Mason. We understand that a three-digit number of a three-digit number shows the amounts of hundreds, tens, and ones. We made a video that shows nine hundreds, nine tens, and nine ones equals ninety-nine. Nine hundred, nine tens, and nine ones is nine hundred ninety-nine. And that's the number that we got. We can count forwards and backwards by fives, tens, and hundreds from any number. We can get a picture that showed our counting and also made a video that showed we could count forward and backwards for different numbers. We can create and write numbers to a thousand using base-ten numerals, number names, and expanded forms. We use base-ten pieces, numbers, and equations to show our understanding. We can use our understanding of place values to solve problems. We took a picture and made a video to show our thinking. Okay, so we got thirteen plus seventeen equals thirty, right? We have a mystery task of thirteen boys and seventeen girls in a house. They each got -- and you can still make that. How many tickets, total tickets and all? Well, yeah, thirteen plus seventeen equals thirty, but the ten tickets each have plans equals three hundred. Or you could do it, one hundred seventy plus one hundred thirty equals three hundred. So, the minimum number we want is three hundred. We can use less than, greater than, and equals to to compare two numbers. We created nine examples of how to use less than and greater than and equals to. We are mathematicians. Thank you. Thank you for creating our ebooks. Thank you very much. In our science class, we were experimenting with different materials and their properties to design sail to make our boat go the farthest. We used the iPad to take photos of our sail designs, record our thoughts. We do our trials so we could replay the video to make thoughtful design improvements. Create an electronic science journal to show our learning as we follow the engineering design process. Now, Megan and Kingston will show their ebook. Hitting the wind by Megan and Kingston. We followed the engineer-designed projects to explore how wind can be used to do work. Ask, how can I harness the wind to move my boat the farthest? Imagine, which materials and shapes would best catch the wind? Why? We thought hard stuff would be hurt and if the wind bent it, it would go back to normal right away. Plan, draw a diagram and label the parts and materials. Create, build and test your sail. Try a wind the farthest. Give one for a few. And test one.
So, instead of water, we used two pieces of fishing line to move the raft on.
I think we'll move on to the next page.
Improve. What changes did you make and why? We added tissue paper to our second design because we thought the tissue paper would catch the wind and test you with you and it happy.
So what? We learned a light sail will go faster than a heavy sail. Also, it had to have a big sail so it could catch more wind. Wind energy can be used to do many things, like pushing a boat or turning a wind turbine or even drying clothes. Mr. Colas Smith with Megan Colas Smith showing a model of a wind turbine. The end.
Thanks for taking your time to see their work. I appreciate it. It's nice to be in the high school and feel like we're part of a huge continuum here.
Thank you very much for sharing your activities, your projects. First of all, I want to remind everybody, they are only second graders, in case you thought they were like fifth graders or something. So, does anybody on the commission have any comments?
Hi, guys. I just want to say thank you so much, first of all, for all your hard work at school and, second of all, for coming here and being so articulate and for speaking to us tonight. I really love hearing about what you're doing. So, thank you.
I also wanted to say something to the second graders. I love the way you were so proud to say you're mathematicians at the end of the first ebook and I can also tell that you're scientists and engineers and writers. And I think it is so great that you're learning to learn things and then turn around and tell other people because when you can explain what you're doing, it's a great chance to help educate more people. So, I just feel so proud of what you're doing. Thank you for coming.
I should let you know that our new superintendent actually was getting a tour of Evans and walked in while the children were actually in the process of doing these trials. He was pretty impressed. It was pretty exciting to watch, you know?
There was a lot going on that day.
Yeah.
It was exciting, yes.
Thank you very much.
So, we're also fortunate to have one of our older students here and we want to recognize Idil Hassan, whose writing was selected to receive the Portfolio Gold Medal from the Scholastic Art and Writing Contest. Sixteen high school seniors, including Idil, received this program's highest national honor, which includes a $10,000 cash scholarship. Idil's here to share a little of her work with us.
My name's Idil Hassan. This is one of the works that I submitted. It's called Love Letter to Somalia. Your words are bullets. You make me swallow whole, letting them drop like bombs into my gaping stomach. You make me want to cry tears of famine, breathe breaths made sour by drought. My words so dry, they crumble like the dust of the street. I want to breathe in the colors that come off of your skin like plumes of smoke. I want to taste them in the back of my throat for them to stick to my lungs so that my words are the color of exile, the rattle of my breath the very sound of you. I want your brown arms around my waist to pull me into you, bury me under the rubble of a country human death, as of more times than I ever could. You cry when I tell you I'm with another, but I left you because you would be the end of me and his arms might be too pale for me to sink into, his mouth too clumsy to roll my name across his tongue, too thick to taste all the people I carry in it, but his gaps and holes, they aren't as large as yours and when I embrace him, my arms cover them up. I want to crawl into you, forget the bad things you've done and pretend that those years I wasted on a man who could never see beauty in a headscarf like you did ever happened. When I lay my head on your chest, I hear bullets breaking through skin and tearing a bone, of bombs whistling to the ground. I remember why I can never find any peace in you. Every year, I sing you a love song to celebrate the time you told me you lived only to be a home for me. And with every line, you breathe into my ear a new apology for not being the one I sing of, for making promises you could never keep. You are the reason I always try to build a home on words as strong as smoke. No longer does it matter that you share my eyes or smell of cinnamon and when shy or taste of sea salt and prayers at dawn. I want to forget you when your bullets become too large for me to swallow, when I become sick of the taste of metal in my mouth. But you are a mile deep within my skin, in the words of my mother's tongue that fall from my mouth like bricks. I want you in a way that you can never be and even though you held me with the arms of drought, you loved me with the strength of a refugee. You loved me in the only way you knew how. So, I forgive you for breaking my heart, for making me leave a home, because I am rooted in my family's blood. I forgive you for denying me memories of the men I cried for when you smiled and winced, the men I can taste in the ripeness of mangoes and in the sweet, heavy smell of frankens and... I loved you and my hate for the pain you always made me feel, but you are a hurt that can sing stories in my name and never look away when you're only weak. And after seventeen years of separation, you've never left me, kissed my mouth despite the taste of heartbreak, held my hands to civil war as if you could not feel the way they burn and bite. You are a home I can never outgrow nostalgia and love, and despite everything, Jen calls your name with longing each time it spills my lips and every one of my supplications. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any board comment?
I'm crying, I'm sorry.
All right.
Yes, I just wanted to say that I've read this poem several times and every time, I chose to throw out. Thank you. I just wanted to thank you, Neil, for coming. I know you've been in high demand and probably very busy and just say congratulations and thank you for sharing this with us.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay.
I also want to say thank you and congratulate you and some of what I found so impressive is not only the deep emotion and the depth of the poem, but just also, at the same time, the technical mastery. I thought the use of the mechanics of poetry, the extended metaphor, I thought it was really just so skillfully put together. It was a really powerful piece.
I think we're all recognizing how this, how her work drew the attention and the acclaim that it did and very well deserved. So, thank you again for sharing. Thank you. Moving on, we'll be moving on into public comment. Has anybody signed up for public comment this time? Mr. Abbey's going to come up.
I just wanted to comment, too. I know people are leaving, but as a teacher in Burlington, a longtime teacher in Burlington and representing the board, tonight, what a great opportunity to see -- I teach third grade, but to see where our kids are at and this is the best of what Burlington has to offer our students. So, just a wonderful job and very impressed tonight. Good evening. My name is Bob Abbey and I've been a third-grade teacher at Flynn Elementary for seventeen years and I'm also president of the BEA. I wanted to take a minute tonight to welcome our new board members and to pass along a sincere thank you to those members who have chosen to return. Mark, I'm not sure if you knew what you were getting yourself into, but the tradition is that the president always gets together with the board chair and we go out and have a refreshment and traditionally, the board chair pays for the first year and in the second year, we split it and by the third year, then I start taking over. So, just to keep that in mind. Howard understands we have lunch together and he was a quick study and brought his own bag lunch, knowing that at the BEA, we run things -- and brought his own bag lunch, knowing that at the BEA, we run things very slim and trim. But, Mark, congratulations. And again, sincerely to everybody who has chosen to return, thank you very much. I truly do appreciate it. We all play a very important role in shaping the education of Burlington students. It is essential that every Burlington parent and guardian trusts that we are working together and that we can overcome the recent divisions of the past year. I look forward to returning to a time when teachers, administrators, and school board work together respectfully to ensure that we are meeting the needs of our students and their families. I'm reaching out to ask you to help rebuild the trust that has eroded. I will be ready to help mend those bridges by offering to meet whenever anyone feels that it would be beneficial. We have some large challenges in front of us as we look to finish up this year and to look forward toward the next. I also just wanted to, at this time, acknowledge Howard's work, and he has done what I believe and teachers feel all the way across the district, a truly remarkable job under very difficult circumstances, and has really started to bring our school forward, our schools forward, and certainly with an eye of setting up Burlington schools for our new superintendent. So Howard, thank you very much, and I really appreciate your work and looking forward to these next three or four months together working. So thank you. Again, I ask for your help in moving forward and giving you an offer at any time. If you would like to meet, I've done it a number of times with some of you one-on-one, and I really feel like that is the best way as we move forward. And new board members, thank you very much, and I appreciate meeting you all individually. So in that way, I also have some business cards that I rarely get to use, so I'm going to do this and pass these out quickly, and then I have to scoop back home for my three kids in Underhill. But for everybody here, we've got a lot of work ahead of us, but I appreciate all your help. Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak? All right, moving on to the next item on the agenda is the board orientation. And Mr. Farmer, you going to speak to that?
Could I, yes. I'm fighting a bit of a cold, so excuse me if I have to go for my handkerchief here or my water. I appreciate this opportunity, and I echo the congratulations that have been voiced to all of you who have been elected or reelected, and more recently tonight to the posts of chair and clerk. How many of you folks are new? Okay, so three total. Okay, so I guess, I'm, I think, I'm assuming it was Howard that did a great job of supplying or referring to the documents on the agenda that we would encourage you, as our firm, McNeil, Letty, and Sheehan, as counsel to the district, strongly encourage you to review and become familiar with ostensibly, if you haven't done it already, and obviously, we wouldn't be surprised if you have not done that. I'll touch on a couple of those briefly. As I go through, what I understand are three points that the superintendent asked Joe McNeil to have us focus on just briefly tonight as you start this present board's tenure. The first area being that of roles, R-O-L-E-S, and that one of the documents that the superintendent has referred you to is the policy BBA, BSD Policy BBA, which in fact is just the, is a, recites sixteen Vermont statutes annotated 563 in describing the role of the board, and in pertinent part, I think for tonight's purposes, stating that the board shall determine the educational policies of the school district. As opposed to the policy and statutory designation of the superintendent's role as found at sixteen Vermont statutes annotated 242, the superintendent being the chief executive officer, who will carry out those policies as they've been adopted by the board. And further to that, Charter, City of Burlington Charter provision, Article 58, particularly sections 171 and 172, speak to that. Obviously, I would assume that, it goes without saying that the three new members will have the benefit of a vast amount of experience of the rest of, to draw on from the rest of you folks in helping them to the extent they need it, keep those, the varying roles as between the board and the superintendent clear to the extent that'll be necessary. As I understand it, the second area that the superintendent wanted us to touch on just briefly was legal services, and when it might be appropriate to seek them out and how to do that. I know that one of the documents that the superintendent referred you to on the agenda is School Policy B-12, which describes the role of the school attorney. Briefly stated, we typically respond to requests or inquiries from the superintendent or the board chair, and beyond that, committee chairs as authorized by the board itself and other administrators as authorized by the superintendent from time to time. I would just encourage you to, if you think you might be delving into something that might require legal review, when in doubt, obviously, or in every instance, at least consult your, the pertinent committee chair, and if that's not applicable, then I would suggest consulting the chair or the superintendent themselves to make sure that the path is clear and justified. The third area is perhaps a little more interesting to the extent that the pertinent law changed substantively in the summer of 2014, that being the quote-unquote "open meeting" laws. And just a couple of points that we would advise you to keep in mind as you endeavor to do your good work, keep in mind the electronic quorum. I know that more and more, especially in the last several years, we've encouraged our municipal clients to obviously utilize email as a means of disseminating information or organizing events. It's when the back and forth ensues without a proper warning or the trappings of a duly warned meeting that municipalities can get into trouble. And it's important to, in trouble to the extent that they may be butting up against the statute's prohibitions in terms of warnings and notice. Please keep in mind that the statute, and if you want to jot it down or type it in to your laptops, it's, for the most part, begins at 1 Vermont Statute Annotated 310. 312 is the section that speaks directly to meetings, and then 313 is the section that speaks to executive sessions, and I'll touch on that briefly. But please keep in mind that these provisions apply to the committees, too, the smaller bodies within the subbodies of the board. And to loop back to email, I would submit that it's the safer practice to assume that whatever you're putting in an email in terms of school business, if some, if push comes to shove, somebody, if push comes to shove, will be regarded as a public document to be disclosed unless some very specific exemptions apply. It's been our experience over the last several years that the courts are liberal in construing the exemptions as against non-disclosure, meaning they'll go out of their way and rightfully so to ensure that the maximum amount of public information is made public if somebody's requesting it, and to err on the side of disclosure versus non-disclosure. I know that I spoke to Joe McNeil today. He wanted me to emphasize, and perhaps it was as a result of a discussion with the superintendent, that one of the substantive changes in the notice requirements is that the warning has to be posted now in three places ultimately for a regular meeting at least. And to the extent you want the statutory site, it's 1 Vermont Statute, Vermont Statutes Annotated 312D. Executive sessions. Historically, most of you are experienced to the extent that historically, for at least a school district, typically invoked for discussions of real estate or contracts or litigation. The statute did change and to require, when going into executive session, in certain cases, a specific finding prior to going into executive session that premature general public knowledge would clearly place the public body or a person involved at a substantial disadvantage. In the past, before the change in the law in the summer of 2014, it was common for municipal bodies for a member to make a motion saying, "I move that we go into executive session," and quote that language. All in favor, say aye, ostensibly, and it would be voted up to go into executive session. Now, we're encouraging people to, on the record, in an open session, make a specific finding by motion. I make a motion that the board finds specifically that premature disclosure of the topic which we're about to undertake might place, would clearly place the public body or a person involved at a substantial disadvantage. That pre-vote, if you would, applies to the discussion, where the body wants to discuss contracts, labor relation agreements with employees, excuse me, arbitration remediation, grievances other than tax grievances, pending or probable civil litigation or prosecution to which the public body is or may be a party, and confidential attorney-client communications made for the purpose of providing professional legal services to the body. This, I'm reading now from the present version of 1 VSA 313, Section A1. And then subsequent to that, without, the body can go into executive session without making that pre-finding, if you would, for some of the things that we discussed as well. The negotiating and securing of real estate, the appointment of employment or evaluation of a public officer, discipline, so on and so forth. They're all found at 1 VSA 313. But the record should reflect whenever you go into executive session, the purpose for doing so without, obviously, having to articulate in too great a detail why you're doing it. And it's important that the record is specific as to who is invited. The statute speaks to, basically, the chair can invite in whoever he or she deems as appropriate for purposes of that discussion. And it's important, and this has been, this has come up, we've seen this quite a bit. It's important, once you're in executive session, to be mindful that the topic should remain only that matter which, for which the executive session was invoked, and to avoid situations where it's like, hey, as long as we're in here, I got a question about this other thing that would probably be executive session anyway, et cetera. That's, that is a no-no. That's all I had in terms of my bullets for just a quick and dirty trip through some of the things that we thought were important as you begin another tenure of your good works. But I'm up for questions if necessary.
Any questions from the board, please?
Just a question I've wondered, and I've been the last two years on the board. So someone, you know, if you have several emails, so you have your BSD email, and then you have your personal email, you have your work email. So I understand it's a good idea to attempt to keep your stuff separate, but in terms of what becomes public record, if there's something on an email that isn't your board email, is that also subject to the same stringency?
Well, I think you'd have, as you may know from some of the public records requests that we've had over the last couple of years from the media, we'll endeavor to, if there's a question, we're, if we're called upon to do redactions, and sometimes the body itself will take a first shot at that, we'll, if it's clearly non-districtated, really, it's obvious that if you're using your personal email as reflected in the popular press lately involving some politicians, if it looks like the business of the people, that's going to go, and we're going to have to go into the exceptions. If it's clearly on its face, in the middle of an email string, "I've got to, I've got to go to the, I've got to go to the doctor so I can't make this meeting," et cetera, et cetera, or something more personal along that nature, it's easily redacted.
Yeah. Any other questions?
I have a, probably a more complicated question that I just want to footnote for the future. I'm just interested in understanding more about how, to what extent the city charter kind of dictates our parameters in terms of, it seems that there's some, in some cases, in some city departments, it's explicit as far as, you know, their types of officers and other types of operational issues. And then the school district is, seems like a different kind of creature that, you know, it's not really clear to me, are we or are we not a city department? And if we're not, what are we and why? And in terms of our relationship with the city charter, you know, how does that operationalize itself in terms of our relationship with the state? So I know I'm not looking for an answer right now, but this is kind of a more global question that has come up for me again and again in trying to, are we the only municipality in the state that's in the city charter? And, you know, how does that?
Where the board, where the district is, and the only, thank you for not pressing me on it now, obviously. I didn't gird for that, but the, I will say that in spitting out the, some of the provisions today from the computer, it's, the board and the superintendent are all under the, all under Title VI's executive departments, so. We'd be happy to, happy to vet that if asked by the board chair or the superintendent or the appropriate committee chair. And maybe.
Or by the clerk.
Or by, or by the clerk.
You know, I just wanted to, if you pass on to Joe, that came up.
Yeah.
I think it's something we might want to explore a little more as we are examining the opportunity to, you know, look at the state board of, the super, whatever you call it, the SBA. Their, you know, goal to standardize the way school boards perform from a policy governance standpoint, and, you know, do we have any, do we bump up against anything in the city charter that might, that we might need to look at? So it's just kind of something to put out there for Joe to keep in the back of his mind.
I will be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
The other Joe.
Absolutely.
The other Joe.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And best of, best of luck.
I do have one, there's one more question for you, I'm sorry.
Actually, a question about things not covered in the Board Policy BE 23. There's a number of more particular things that I wondered if anyone was ever going to elucidate, will that get elucidated later? Okay. Because some of them I was wondering about.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Terry, you're next. Welcome.
I'm Terry Barisius, parliamentarian. For people who don't know me, I, it was the city council many years ago, I was president of the city council back in the 1980s and served five terms in the legislature, and I've served as a parliamentarian for a lot of organizations and facilitator and so on. And I actually am one of the rare people who actually enjoys looking through Robert's Rules of Order to look up what the rules are and so on. I'm gonna try and keep this really brief, and if, and if you need more detail, you can try and drag it out of me. So obviously, there's the statute and the charter that govern what, what you do, and then there's your own rules, which you adopt by a resolution. And then anything that's not governed by those, you fall back on Robert's Rules of Order by the rules you've adopted. The clerk provided me with the, from the manual, BDDE, Rules of Order, which is incredibly short for an organization like this, that you have almost no specific rules specific to your organization, which is very unusual. So it means almost, almost everything in theory falls into Robert's Rules of Order. At the very least, I, I think that you as a group need to formalize, if, maybe there's some resolution that's passed long ago that never made it into the manual, that still exists about, for example, agenda setting, some organizations just leave it to the superintendent, but it's arguably not administration's role, it's the board's roles, set their own agenda, et cetera. What is the process for getting something on the agenda, et cetera? That's probably something you should have a rule about. And I might be mistaken, but I didn't see one that exists. Same thing for committee assignments. Robert's Rules of Order, which as far as I know, there's nothing in, in your existing rules that says how committees get formed. Robert's Rules of Order provides five different procedures that can be used, but whatever procedure you use for setting up committees needs to be approved by the board. So a majority vote of the board would approve of the process for creating committees. You could say that we're gonna elect the committee members, or the chair will appoint the committee members, or we'll do it by lottery. Whatever system you come up with, it needs to be a system that the board has approved So setting those things aside, Robert's Rules of Order itself, I'm gonna make this really short, the, the concept here is simply that majority rules. And that's the key thing that you need to know. And what the rights of the minority, however, are the rights to know what's going on, to get information, and to debate things. So anything that would infringe on that minority right to know what's going on, get information, and debate things, in other words, to cut off debate, to go ahead and vote on the item, to limit the, how much time people can speak, those sorts of things which would limit the rights of the minority have to be passed by a supermajority, two-thirds. So you can't just say, "We're gonna vote on this now because a majority just think we're ready to vote." It takes two-thirds of you to say, "We're done with the debate." Otherwise, it's not considered a, well, I'll just leave it like that. So the, the, the next point I would make is simply that, the basic idea of Robert's Rules of Order is simply you take one thing at a time. And if you can keep that in mind, so if there's a main motion to adopt a resolution, and someone wants to amend it, and that's seconded, and you start dealing with that amendment, it's common, if you're sitting around the kitchen table, to people bring up things about the main motion again because it's sort of relevant. But the whole idea of Robert's Rules of Order is you limit yourself to the one item which has to be dealt with. So if someone's made a motion to amend the main motion, you're only to talk about that amendment. Sometimes you have to make reference to the main motion because it's relevant to whether the amendment's a good idea or not, but there's a real strong temptation for people to, to make it a general discussion about the general topic, and that's really not allowed. Another question that comes up often in Robert's Rules of Order is the role of the chair, and your, your rules of order say that you can use what Robert's Rules of Order calls rules for small boards. And, and Robert's Rules of Order says around a dozen is their, their threshold for a small board, which means that you can choose to behave more informally, in an informal setting. And, and the board as a group would say, "We wanna get now, because this is really controversial, it's getting hot, we're gonna fall back on using Robert's Rules of Order strictly." But when you're at a point where the second grade group is presenting, it's like, you know, we don't really have to have a motion on the floor here to hear from the committee. You can, you can behave informally as, like a committee, but you have to know as a group that if, if some members are feeling that the informality is allowing things to go on too long, or is interfering with their rights to, to know what's going on, or for whatever other reason, you have a right to force the board to go back into using former, formal Robert's Rules of Procedure, where items need seconding. The chair would not engage in debate unless the chair gave the gavel over to some other member to, to call on names during the debate, et cetera, et cetera. But in informal meeting, when you're acting sort of like a committee of the whole, then the chair can engage in discussion. The chair can even make motions when you're in that informal stage. But you need to be clear as a group, when you're being informal, acting as a committee, and when you're following Robert's Rules of Order strictly. And sometimes there are boards that will go back and forth depending on how controversial a particular item is. Often, a, a chair can simply say, "Without objection, we'll consider the next three items adopted, and we'll go right to the fourth item." And if nobody objects, you're done with those items. You don't have to make a motion, have it seconded, raise hands, you can proceed much more efficiently and quickly for non-controversial items. The next point I wanted to make was that, let's see, I have something I'm gonna pass around, I mean, hold on, my, my wife is a teacher, and she said, "You never pass out your handouts till you're done talking," because then people only look at the handouts. But you're gonna get a handout, which is just a list of common, the major motions and their order of priority. And remember, that Robert's Rules of Order is only there to facilitate getting things done in an efficient manner. It's not there as a way of using your knowledge of Robert's Rules to get your way, even though some, majority of people don't like that idea. That's an abuse, and it really should not be allowed and cannot be allowed to persist. Some common misunderstandings about Robert's Rules of Order, people used to, that I, motions to table as being hidden motions to kill an item. A motion to table is merely a means to set it aside temporarily, and any member can bring it back up off the table by moving, "I move to bring it back up off the table," and a majority can bring it back up off the table at any time. So tabling is not the same as killing, it's just setting it aside temporarily. There are motions, you might say, to postpone something to a particular time, postpone this motion to the next meeting. Again, that's the kind of thing that takes a majority vote. Or you could have, there is a motion to actually kill something, which is a motion to postpone indefinitely, meaning we're never gonna look at it again. So there are actual names for these things, and some of them are listed on this, on this table I'm gonna send, send around. And the only rule in Robert's Rules of Order that sometimes causes confusion is motions to reconsider something, an action that the board's taken, let's say, at the last meeting, and you want to reconsider that action. If the, the vote that you took has not gone into effect, like you agreed to hire somebody, and they've been hired, and they've filled out their, their paperwork, you cannot then, at the next meeting, vote to reconsider that. In other words, if the action's already had effect in the world, you can't reconsider at that point. You need to bring up a whole new motion to fire the person or whatever. But if it's an action like a, an internal resolution about procedures or something, and you want to reconsider that, the rule is that the only person who can make a motion to reconsider something that's already been adopted is somebody who voted on the prevailing side in the original vote, as to prevent people from wasting time voting to reconsider things because they lost over and over again. Now, there is a tricky thing in that your rules say that you won't have a recorded vote unless somebody requests it before the vote, you know, like a roll call vote. But most votes are just show of hands, or ayes and nays, and who voted what way is not recorded, which means by Robert's Rules of Order, anybody can then vote, bring it back to reconsider next meeting because there is no official record, say, "I remember you voted that way." No, it doesn't work like that. If there's not a recorded vote, then it's, anybody who asserts that they voted on the prevailing side did. If it's a recorded vote, there is this weird procedure you may even have seen people do sometimes, they, they realize, "Oh, the vote's going against me, and this is a horrible idea, and most of the board members, or half the board members, aren't here, this is an unusual group, this isn't really representative of what the majority would want if they were all here." So a member can actually, before the results of the vote is called, say to the chair, "Mr. Chairman, I'd like to change my vote to yea," even though they voted nay originally. And they can do that so that they can be on the prevailing side, so that the next meeting, they can bring it back formally, because there will be a genuine majority, they believe, at the next board. This is only something to deal with when there's an unusual circumstance, you feel like there's a rump session, and the majority would never go along with this, and it's to preserve your right to reconsider. So there are unusual features like that in Robert's Rules of Order, which, which I got with, most people don't know about ahead of time, and there are things like that, people feel like they're trickery, but it is in Robert's Rules of Order. And it would be, behoove you all to actually go through these, the table and get a general idea of what these are. And there is an order of precedence of motions. You know, if, if you're currently considering a main motion, and there's been a motion to amend, someone else can't then offer a motion to amend some other part of the main motion. No, you have to deal with the amendment that's before you now, although you might make a motion to amend that amendment for further changing within that, but you can't have competing motions going on simultaneously, you deal with one at a time. I know a lot of you've dealt with this kind of stuff before, and there's only a few new members, so I don't think I should go on any longer than that. I guess I would just say that at least the chair should really study up on Robert's Rules. I think you probably already know them pretty well, but the role of the chair is to help people accomplish what they want to do in the proper procedure. In other words, it's not like you all have to have Robert's Rules of Order memorized. It's okay to say, "Mr. Chairman, I want to accomplish doing this, what motion should I make here?" Or maybe the city attorney's office will be here or something like that, I don't know. But the role of the chair is to facilitate the meeting, the group, the members getting what they want to accomplish. So I'll pass around the, the chart of, of motions in priority order, talks about which ones require a two-thirds majority, which ones don't, which ones require a second, which ones don't. Like you can have a, a motion of parliamentary inquiry, what, what is the motion before us? Are we dealing with a main moment, amendment? Or are we dealing with an amendment to the amendment? You know, that kind of inquiry, you can interrupt so that you know what's going on. So some, some motions don't actually require a second and so on and so forth. So I'll just pass these around. I think I've made like 12 or 13 copies over here. And I, and I guess that's it for, for the presentation. It, it, there's so much to Robert's Rules of Order, it's really no, hard to know how to really make it, you know, manageable in a short amount of time, but I think I'll stop there and see if there's any questions.
Yeah, thanks, Terry. I had a question. When you were speaking before, I was interested in you talked about the rights of the minority are to gain clarity and to debate. What are the, what is the role and the rightful action of the chair in managing that? So it feels like we've been in conversation before, and because it's getting late, or caused, for any different reason, like discussion will be ended. It'll be kind of like, okay, we'll take one more question, whatever. Is it the right of an individual to continue to, you know, pursue greater clarity or to debate the point?
Yes, under Robert's Rules of Order, unless you as a group have set rules, for example, you might decide to adopt rules, normally under Robert's Rules of Order, nobody gets to speak a second time until anybody else who wants to speak has gotten a chance to speak their first time. In committee, when you're working as a committee of the whole or informally, that rule is usually sort of ignored, it becomes more conversational. But if you're in the Robert's Rules of Order, there's that rule. Or you might adopt a rule saying, "No one can speak more than twice," period. But if you haven't adopted some rule, under Robert's Rules of Order, debate goes on until everybody is done, unless someone makes a motion, say, "I move that we limit debate to no more than one speaker in favor and one against," or no more than five minutes. And that motion requires a two-thirds majority to be passed. If it doesn't have two-thirds majority, debate can proceed and proceed and proceed. Usually, most boards adopt some overall rule, so they don't have those sort of situations coming up late at night. The city council, I remember when I was on, they adopted a rule saying, "We're gonna adjourn at 11:00 PM, that's the rule, unless we suspend the rule by two-thirds majority to extend the meeting." So they made it, the default was things come to an end, but you have to adopt that rule upfront.
And prior to the business, or just at that meeting? Can you adopt-
Well, normally, you would adopt a rule that would be for the year.
For the year.
A rule about how agendas are gonna be set, how debate is gonna proceed. Your current rules say that the chair will call on people, not in the order that you raise your hands, but in the order that the chair thinks will facilitate debate. So in other words, that might be, the chair might say, "I want a pro-con, pro-con on a thing." But your current rules say that the chair will not call on hands in the order they raise, but in the order that he deems to be most, to facilitate the, the coming to a decision.
So, thank you very much. I can't tell you how helpful this is, and also that we didn't get this before when the new board came on last time, so this is super great. And things like what you, that's, you know, earth-shattering, that change, we've never done that, we've always had the chair do it in order, so this is interesting. I wondered, I know that you could go on forever, but there are two issues that I've noticed come up quite a bit, have come up the last two years, and I wondered if you could just take a minute to talk about them. One is a, a little pet peeve of mine, which is minutes, if you could address what's the appropriate amount of information to put in minutes?
Robert's Rules, it doesn't really go into depth there. Basically, you establish a, a culture and a custom. A lot of boards will only put in minutes decisions, things that were voted, it's just a list of decisions. Other boards will have conversation that went on, and anywhere in between, but Robert's Rules of Order does not dictate what, how minutes should be-
So barring a, a rule that we set, basically, we can do whatever we want, and it doesn't have to be consistent? Okay. And then the second is the notion of a friendly amendment. If you could-
Ah, yes.
That is something we-
Yes, this is, this is one which is often misused. The concept is if someone has a motion, there's a motion before the board, "I move to adopt the motion, seconded, debate. I move to amend it. I want to do this, 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 change the date, and change the number of people, and do these changes." At that point, someone is allowed to, Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, what's, what's the title? Chair?
Chair.
"I would like to offer a friendly amendment to change the number three to the number five, because, you know, it would be better." At that point, before the chair has, has presented the amendment as a formal item, you have that small window during which you can offer a friendly amendment. And a friendly amendment means that you're offering it always through the chair, you never speak to each other in theory, you only speak to the chair, to the member. You're, you're offering a friendly amendment that if the maker of that amendment would say, "Oh yeah, you know, that makes sense, that's friendly, I'll incorporate that into my own," that the person who's making the amendment can accept or reject a friendly amendment. The problem is this, once the amendment has been made and debate has begun, it is no longer the possession of the maker of the amendment. Many boards, the city council and a lot of places, don't understand that, and they think anybody at that point can still offer the maker of the motion a friendly amendment, allowing that person unilateral power to continue to, to amend and continue to change it. That's not what a friendly amendment is for. Friendly amendment is only when it's first made, before the, the chair has said, "So you have the amendment before you, what is your pleasure?" And opens the floor to debate. Friendly amendment is only right before that happens. Once it's the possession of the body, the maker of the motion has no special rights to accept or reject quote-unquote friendly amendments. Now, if you're working in a committee form, it's often really practical to just go ahead and do that, but when you get hot and heavy and things are controversial, it becomes the possession of the body, and it takes a formal motion to amend, second, "All in favor." You cannot do friendly amendments after there has been debate. You cannot do friendly amendments after there has been debate.
Thank you for clarifying.
I have a follow-up question to that, just to get some clarity. Are you saying that a friendly amendment would be made right after the motion is made? And if people want to amend it during the discussion, the process wouldn't be a friendly amendment, it would be amendment that everyone votes on?
An amendment to the amendment.
Thank you. I just wanted to be clear that that's what I heard.
However, and then the question becomes, if someone says, "Well, yeah, but you changed it to five, I'd really like to see it to six." An amendment to the amendment to the amendment is a third order, and that's not allowed. You have, you only go, you can't keep offering amendments to amendments to amendments to amendments. The Robert's Rules of Order sets, you can go to the second tier, you can't go to the third and fourth tier.
Would you, I don't want to keep going on, but would you have to start over at that point if you?
You would actually deal with that one, and then, so let's say, he, she proposed to change three to six, and you really want it to be five, and so you offer it to be five, amendment to be amendment, and then someone else says, "I want it to be seven." He can't offer seven. He has to wait for yours to pass yes or no to amend hers, hers to pass yes or no, and then he can go, "I want to make it seven now, an amendment, a further amendment." And that's allowed. But you can't just keep tacking on amendment to amendment. You have to vote on them, and then you're back to the main motion as amended, then someone can make a motion to amend the main motion as it has been amended.
So my actual question I have for you is, are there any resources or support groups or like coffee clutches, or people sit around and practice this? Because it might be good for some people, if they're interested, to do that.
There is an organization, what's it called? Oh, I knew someone who was a member of it. There's a national organization, people who are shy, who want to learn how to do public speaking. Toastmasters. And they actually do things like that, but I don't know of anything like that or anything active in Burlington, but, so, I don't know of any. Thanks.
So I just wanted to clarify, does a friendly amendment require a second?
No, a friendly amendment doesn't require a second, and the key thing is that nine times out of 10, when people try to offer friendly amendments, they're out of order. Because, no, it's too late, it's the possession of the body, it no longer belongs to the person who proposed it, because there's been debate. Usually, people come up with the idea of a friendly amendment, after there's been debate, they've sort of figured out what they want, they want to change a little bit, but it's no longer belongs to the person who proposed it. It's now before everybody, and everybody has equal right to amend it, not just the person who proposed it.
So the procedure is, offer to the chair, the chair asks the original maker of the motion.
Whether it's friendly.
Whether it's friendly, and if that person says no, does it die?
Yes.
Okay.
But the person could then offer it as an amendment.
As a formal amendment?
Yes.
Which requires a second?
Yes.
And then in the friendly, in that scenario, so if someone moved, we should always adjourn at 11 o'clock, and Commissioner Stoll thought, no, 10:45 would be better, and she immediately squeezes in 10:45, and I say, "Sure, friendly." Does that friendly amendment get voted on?
No.
No. It just, so it sort of magically gets incorporated.
Yeah, as if, oh, I just misspoke. Yes, that's what I wanted, yes, that's fine.
Okay, so then it just proceeds to debate. Thank you.
So friendly amendments are only made before debate starts. That's pretty much cut and dry, correct?
That's the easiest way to think of it, yes. It's before the chair has presented it to the body for discussion.
And I'll firmly give it.
However, as I said, there are a lot of times where there's nothing controversial happening, when the fastest, easiest, cleanest way to do it is to allow that kind of kitchen-table discussion to simplify things. And what you really need is a clear, and I would say, as you put it, in a resolution rule, that, like any one member, or any two members, or whatever, can insist that we revert to strict Robert's Rules of Order. Because Robert's Rules of Order simply allows, it says, "A small board of a dozen or fewer people may proceed as a committee or informally." But Robert's Rules of Order doesn't say how you switch back and forth, or it becomes a matter of custom or a rule that you adopt at the beginning of the year, saying, you know, if one member moves and it's seconded, that we go to formal Robert's Rules of Order, that's it, there's no debate, we just do it. There's a lot of things like that, like the demand to have a roll call vote. Usually, most parliamentary bodies, like if you're in Montpelier, at the House, someone wants a roll call vote, it takes five members to request a roll call vote, because they don't want a roll call vote on every single item, because there's always at least one person who wants a roll call. So the chair would say, "Is the member sustained?" And they, five people stand up, "Okay, then we're going to have a roll call vote." But you don't have a rule about that. So Robert's Rules of Order, by default, would assume that any single member in a small board could demand that there be a roll call vote. But you might want to have a rule saying, "No, we need at least two of us to require a roll call." But you would have to adopt that rule specifically.
Thank you very much, Chair. Commissioners, if you don't mind, we have about eight minutes before the mayor gets here, and we can go ahead and get Howard's two pieces out of the way here, before he does, if you don't mind. Thank you, Chair. Can you, could you ask him in a private email maybe, or something like that?
I just wanted to say that we, well, I can't, can I say it?
Please, go ahead.
So we've discovered tonight that we have no process for creating our committees, right? And this is like the first thing that we do.
We have a board policy.
There may be a board policy, I just, the only rules that I was able to find don't talk about that, but.
Right, there's a separate board policy specifically related to committees.
That specifically says that the chair will.
I'm not, I just know there's a board policy on committees. It's in the packet that we.
But my question is, if there's not a procedure, or there's not a way for, this is a very important, very, very important thing, it's the way we get started, something has to happen quickly. So my question is, is that something that we need to address at this meeting? Because traditionally, after this meeting, immediately, committee members have given their choi, the board's given their choice of where they want to be, and the chair has placed people uncommitted. So I just wanted to make.
It's in the policy.
They do, they say that the chair will do it? Okay, all right, then I stand corrected.
Thank you very much, Terry. Dr. Smith?
Okay. Couple of things that I'm going to, again, encourage you as you get an opportunity to go through the packet of board policies, particularly relating to the board member role and different aspects of board member functioning. So because they're available in writing, it's not something we felt that, you know, would be good use of your time to go through line by line. There is one policy, and was alluded to earlier, that specifically relates to board member orientation and lists several points, so I'll go over them briefly. This is actually our policy on the board member orientation. Talks about an overview of board responsibilities and functions, we've kind of addressed that, and again, you can find much more of that in writing. The second point has to do with how community members, parents, teachers, students, may make a request of the board, appropriate responses, actions of an individual board member when a request is presented directly to him or her. One quote from, I tended with several board members, the board, the sort of 101 work of the school boards put on by Vermont School Boards Association, and there was a statement there that was made that stuck with me a while, and the person who was running the meeting said it's something that's always stuck with him, and that is, he was quoting somebody else, said that, "I'm only a board member when I'm at a board meeting." Sort of an interesting way of thinking, but what it was referring to is sort of board authority. In other words, outside of a board meeting, yes, you are, you're known in the community as a board member, but you don't have any authority to act on behalf of the board or to represent, you know, the board's views outside of the board meeting or in a way other than has already been agreed to by the board. So that's just sort of a general form of discipline, I think, that is important to be mindful of and thinking about. So when people are approaching you, the idea is important not to lead them to believe that you're in a position as a board member right now, have the power and authority to solve your problem right now, or to, you know, take that upon myself. So as so much as a facilitator of, how do we address whatever the issue is? Do you need information? Do you have a question? Do you have a concern? And so usually, it's, and the first, I think, caution is, if anyone sort of, you know, gets in the supermarket and wants to talk about their child or somebody else's child, you might politely suggest the supermarket is probably not the best venue for that type of conversation. So first thing is not, you know, just because someone approaches you, don't, and, you know, be conscious of where you are, your surroundings, depending on the nature of the conversations they want to engage, and you don't feel obligated that you have to just because they happen to see you there, get engaged, particularly if it's an issue that might have some sensitivity to it, arrange for some other opportunity for them to share, you know, that with you. And then usually, if it's anything related to a question or a concern around something, the classic advice is to ask them if they've sort of followed the proverbial chain of command. If it was about a teacher, well, did you speak with the teacher? If it was about a principal, did you speak with the principal? Or if it was about a teacher, and they said, "Well, I wasn't resolved the teacher level." Well, did you, you know, speak with the principal? Did you speak with the superintendent? And so, you know, if at any point along the way, they pause and say they haven't, then the appropriate thing to do is direct them to that level. And you can always, to make sure they appreciate that you're not just sort of dodging the issue, you can say, "Look, please be sure to get back to me if for any reason you don't feel it's resolved, when you, you know, when you root it that, you know, that way." So that, you know, you can, you can give them, make them feel comfortable that they can certainly come back to you, but the first thing they should do is kind of walk it up through the process. And in terms of general information or questions, you know, two ways. You can certainly take it upon yourself, say, "No, I'll ask, I'll shoot the superintendent an email and get that information for you and get it back to you." But you can always encourage them just to contact us directly, or contact the source if you know the, generally would be, you know, through the superintendent's office, but if you happen to know that it's something that, you know, is somebody's department in particular, you can certainly encourage them to just to contact, you know, that person individually. And again, you're acting kind of as facilitator to make sure that they get the information that they're looking for. Another point is how board members may make arrangements to visit schools, the protocol that, generally speaking, I think the important part there is for the general nature of your visit to, unless, if you've been invited specifically by the school principal or teacher for some particular function, show up, just go. It's no big deal. But if you're initiating it, you know, the protocol would be to go through the superintendent's office and just say, you know, "I'd like to go around and visit some schools, I'm interested in checking out some of the classrooms, or I've heard there's some interesting programs." And, you know, I'd sort of identify, you know, the schools where you want to go, and then all I would do as superintendent is give the principal heads up, saying, you know, so-and-so's going to be contacting you about visiting the school to set up an opportunity, and, you know, take it from there, so that you can then go ahead and do that. But generally speaking, it's, as a, the kind of rule of thumb for employees of the district at any level below the superintendent is, that's one of the things that the superintendent is supposed to, you know, sort of be the, in effect, that first, that first line of resource to the board, as opposed to board members going directly to individual teachers and principals when they're initiating something. And it's not to be obstructionary or, you know, in any way impede anything, it's just as a courtesy to, you know, the employees of the district, so that they understand what, you know, what the nature of the visit is or the inquiry, and then can, you know, plan accordingly. And I'll just go through a whole bunch of them, then if you have any questions, please. And a lot of these things too, they're rules of thumb, it's just sort of general protocol. You really have, in any district, there's a culture, and you have certainly the, you know, the opportunity to kind of shape that culture in ways that you think are, you know, most in keeping with, or shape your practice, I should say, in ways you think are most in keeping with the culture, you know, within some broad parameters. How board members assign certain tasks or investigate certain problems may request information or services to school staff. That's a tricky one because of the, mostly because of the potential time demands. If you think about it for a minute, if every board member just said, "I'm only going to take up 10 minutes of superintendent's time or a director's time, you know, this week on some issue, and, but that issue requires like half an hour of follow-up," and if every board member did that, that's an eight-hour day. You just, cumulatively, now that's eight hours out of the week that's been devoted to those things. Each one might seem to be a very legitimate question, relatively harmless, what's the big deal, I just needed this, I needed that. So it's just important to be conscious of the cumulative effect if board members develop a habit of sort of peppering directors and the superintendent with frequent requests to check this out, can you do this thing, can you, you know, investigate that, and so forth. Generally speaking, again, if it's a, if there's a question and it's a factual thing, and I just, I need some information, you should feel comfortable really to approach any senior director around just a point of information when it's sort of their department. Also, if you are on a committee, you can certainly go through your contact person, your, the senior director who works with that committee. Again, point of information, point of clarification, that type of thing. If you're, if you want to get into something that translates to some significant investment of time, or, you know, I'd like you to create a report or something, at that point, that really should come to the board first, and there should be a consensus in the board that this is a good use of, you know, people's time in the district, and then, fine, you go forward and you've all sort of agreed, or there's a consensus that something like this, that's going to require a little more time or investigation or whatever, is appropriate, and everybody then knows, and the administrators involved now at least have the comfort of knowing that this is something that represents a consensus view as some, you know, they may have to reprioritize their time in order to accommodate it, but it is, you know, at the direction of the board, not just a person who woke up in the morning with a really great idea about this and that. Not that you don't do that, and not that they're not great ideas. It's just a matter of trying to manage that a little bit. How the board receives and examines complaints, issues relating to schools and personnel, I kind of referred to that earlier in general, but, you know, just try to root it up through, you know, through the chain of command, and always, you can always offer yourselves up as, you know, you can cycle back to me if for any reason you weren't satisfied when you went through that process. But if you catch yourself trying to head that off, you have to ask yourself, "Why am I doing that? Is because I don't have confidence in the people involved or in the system or the process? Or is it just because it's a role that I would like to be able to provide as sort of my service as a board member?" But the discipline of it, if you find yourself sort of not asking people to follow through, then we're kind of suggesting that there's something that we have to compensate for, and the real issue then is, what is that and how do we fix it? Because you should have confidence that if people go through the channels, that it should be resolved. And if there's a pattern of that not happening, then there's a bigger issue, and you would need to get involved. Executive sessions, we have covered our attorney, goals and strategic plans are things that we will be getting into as we start to gear up looking ahead to next year, and also dealing with, in a manner that's appropriate in terms of engage, beginning to engage the new superintendent. And then performance evaluations, expectations. I did include as an attachment, this, in my notes with this board meeting, the summary that I prepared for the Policy Governance and Advocacy Committee around issues that have been areas of focus for me over the first part of the, my time here, and also the full text of any of the feedback that was provided by individual board members is available through the Policy Governance Committee, if anybody would like that. So those are some of the items that were covered in the board policy, and I'll pause there if you have other questions, and I add just a couple other things while we're waiting for the mayor that I could touch on as well.
Brian?
So you just shared with us, you know, a lot of rules and responsibilities. I'm wondering, what are the potential consequences if people don't follow them?
Well, there, it depends on, you know, the issue to some extent, but in general, if there's a practice, you know, a pattern of not following them, then it just, it starts to contribute to some potential dysfunction in the relationship between school administration and the board. If it's those issues, or if it's between board members, then it can contribute to dysfunction, you know, at that level as well. And so I think it's important, to the extent that there are, becomes anything that's sort of a pattern, sometimes it, I think it can be helpful if the board president sees that, board chair sees that going on, to quietly, you know, pull aside a board member and maybe have a conversation about that. There are times when the superintendent, depending on what it is, particularly if it's relating to some members of the staff, then I think it's the superintendent's responsibility to, again, share that with the individual board member and make sure they appreciate the impact of what that might be.
So there's consequences in terms of how it affects relationships, but there's no legal consequences, or there's no sanctions or no other recourse?
You'd have to ask the school attorney on that. I don't have any expertise as far as any.
Brian, yeah, that's not the really, obviously, goal for it. You know, it's something that we should all come to an agreement on, as a board, we should come to an agreement on these policies, and this is, we say, "This is how, you know, we all agree that we should be acting, and we should be with communication lines and so on." That might actually, Commissioner Currie? That might actually, Commissioner Curry?
I was just going to mention, there is a code of ethics and it would be good for everybody to familiarize themselves. It provides that kind of guidance of operating ethically. And then I think that, you know, there may be a, a more legal basis for some consequence that the city attorney, I mean, the district attorney could illuminate for us.
Thank you very much. As, Commissioner Curry?
I was just going to mention that, I don't know if Miriam, you might have gone on the tour, but two years ago when Miriam and I were elected, the superintendent orchestrated a very scheduled tour of all the schools as part of the orientation, which was probably way too much work. I just wanted to mention that in the event that maybe there's an opportunity to schedule schools tours over the course of the year or something.
Yeah, I'd certainly be open to facilitating anything, whether I could personally be involved in all of them if it was the, the global tour or if, but could certainly arrange it and would happily, I'm always looking for excuses to get into schools anyhow, so to the extent that I could work it in my own schedule, be happy to, to do that.
If it's okay, I'd like to hold back on any other questions. Mr. Mayor, you just arrived, please.
Thank you, Mark. Appreciate the opportunity to come and, and just say a couple of words to all you tonight. First of all, just wanted to say congratulations on, on your recent elections and for your successful reorganization tonight. And I also want to say thank you for committing yourself to this service at a, what is clearly remains a very important time for the city, for the school district, and one in which you're going to have a lot thrown at you from different directions, go through the process of a new superintendent coming to the city, engage whatever happens in Montpelier this year. And I just wanted to, on behalf of the city, say thank you for, for agreeing to that service. And say just a couple other things and I'd be happy to take questions if, if that's what you'd like. One is, you know, a year ago, we mutually at the city council and here at the board passed resolutions expressing a desire to explore a variety of things together. And the capital, the area of capital needs in terms of the, the long-term investments that our respective groups, bodies need to, to make in the future, I think is still an area that there's real opportunity for important discussions. And I feel that more strongly than ever after a meeting that I went to with Principal Amy Melencamp and Superintendent Smith last week in which we talked very conceptually about the possibility of some kind of investment in this building, this facility at some point. And to me, it was reaffirming, it sort of validated the, a lot of the thinking from last year that there would be, it would be worthwhile for us to explore those discussions further. There are quite a few ideas from kind of both sides of the table about what, some kind of coordination might look like in the future and how that might be an effective, efficient use of the taxpayer resources. And I just wanted to come and, and, you know, share that, something that I mentioned in the, my State of the City speech last night, which is that if, if the school board, the school district thinks it would be valuable at this point to continue those conversations, I certainly understand why it was difficult at times during the last year, but if there is a desire to continue them at this point, the city is eager to have those conversations as well, excited about them, thinks that there's real value in them. And I am going to set aside a small amount of resources in the FY '16 city budget so that we could be an effective partner with you in that exploration and that, you know, certain of these ideas would require some follow-up and, you know, study and, and we'd have some resources on our, on our, our end to do that if that would be helpful. And the, the one other thing I wanted to throw out there and see if there was interest here is one, you know, one of the great things about my job is I do get to talk to frequently with mayors in other cities here, what other, how other cities manage their challenges. And one idea that I picked up recently that seemed like it might have some real value here is the idea of some kind of informal way for us to get together, the, the school board, the city council to get together on a regular basis. I wanted to throw out the idea that the mayor's office would be happy to convene a dinner a couple of times a year, maybe once in the spring, once in the fall, where we could get together, under, get to know each other a little bit better and then perhaps, you know, have some staff presentations or, or share some initiatives if, if that made sense. You know, one example I think is on point with what I was just mentioning about coordinated planning for the future is the ci, we are releasing in this week a first, it's not even quite accurate to call it a first draft, but it is a first attempt to define what the city's municipal capital needs are for the next 10 years. It's been the product of, of quite a bit of work and I think, you know, I think it might be an interesting presentation that, to, to share with you and might spark some thought. So that'd be the kind of thing, we could have someone come in and, you know, after dinner, share, share some news in, in that area, for example. So that was, I appreciated the invitation to, to come tonight and share some thoughts and that's really what I had to, to say at this point. Thank you again, congratulations. And I'd be happy to answer a few questions if that would be helpful.
While you're here, could I just, you take this opportunity, I want to, for the board, this is an opportunity to really, to recognize a lot of work that's taken place in the last few months with the city. The first things that, that, the first conversation we had was about how can the city help us out, you know, in some ways that are, are meaningful given the, you know, the loss of our pilot revenue. And, you know, the mayor was receptive and set a tone with the city administration that was reflected in all, all of our dealings with the folks there. And that's come to fruition in ways that, you know, what we, what I learned, certainly part of my learning curve was how, what interesting relationship the, as, as far as the way it's regulated by the Agency of Education when it comes to the city involvement in, in the school district or city support of anything educational. So on the one hand, we had like all good intentions and then, then you keep running up against all these regulations, "Well, you couldn't really do this, you couldn't really do that." But we did find some ways where the city could be helpful. We had to work with the Agency of Education to get their blessing, which we did. And now we're able to, to plan accordingly and with the, an area that we found that was, was appropriate for assistance, the city was near recreation services for our after-school programming and our summer programming. We were able to show that that is by definition not, you know, the core, you know, academic mission of the school is supplementary and these were expenses that this, that the district has borne and now we're getting some assistance from, from the city. They're also instrumental in, in helping us deal with, it's sort of paving the way so that we can revert back to our policy next, in beginning in the fall, around transportation for students, all students outside the, the walking radius regardless of their ability to pay. So I just wanted to take this opportunity to, to thank you for, for really, you know, opening up the possibilities and, and, you know, encouraging people to continue to work with us over, you know, what amounted to, you know, a few hurdles that we had to get over in, in order to get to the point where we, where we arrive. So pretty much appreciate it.
Let me add to that. Assistant Lieutenant Smith and, and just share that since coming on board, your superintendent has really been very present in a number of conversations, department head meetings that, that I have on a monthly basis, meetings that we have in Montpelier with state legislators and it's, uh, it's been a really appreciated and welcome interaction with the district. And I think at, at times, you know, I, I hope it can continue beyond your tenure, since I know that is sadly, you know, the end is, is not so far off. I think it has really resulted in a number of sort of fortuitous and positive events, decisions that, you know, might not have come otherwise. I did want to just say one more thing to it, your, your comment prompted it. We just want to share, we have been working very hard at the municipal level on the pension reform and, and looking very closely at the causes of this really quite stunning run-up in, in costs that the city is, taxpayers have experienced over the last little more than a decade with respect to the city's pension program. And it's been a very positive process, one that's involved really all the stakeholders being involved, representatives of each of the four public employee unions. And it's also involved a lot of work with the actuary and really understanding, I think, to a greater degree than we have in the past, both, you know, kind of what has been driving this issue and what has made Burlington's problems more severe than other communities have faced and what, what are other communities doing about this? And we don't quite have any news to report to you tonight, but I think we are honing in on some reforms that could have some fairly, you know, significant, relatively near-term impacts that could be potentially good news coming down the, to, to you not far from here in that the district does pay into the city's pension system, you know, in a non, non-trivial way. So if we are able to get some relief on the city side, that could be some good news for the schools as well and it's something else we've been putting a lot of effort into.
Thank you. Any other questions for the mayor? Commissioner Curry?
I just wanted to thank you for coming. I would thank Commissioner Stoll for thinking to invite you and for you taking the time to come and, and talk. It's, it's unprecedented, at least as far as I can remember. And it's nice to, you know, I feel like we were bored interrupted after we started conversations last year and so it's nice to know that they're being picked up where we left off and, and thank you for, you know, supporting our capacity to do some capital planning in conjunction with the city. I think it's, it's all positive and we are, we do have, you know, one big set of municipal assets that, you know, probably could probably be maintained in a, on a more, you know, coordinated and smoother schedule. So I think that's exciting. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Chita?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you. Whoa, sorry. I want to say thank you and just that I'd be down to have dinner more than twice a year.
Any other questions? Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on to the next item on the agenda, it's the superintendent's report.
I had a couple of other pieces of information that were board orientation. I'll, I'll just send them to you as an email attachments. One was an interesting product of some research on sort of characteristics of effective school boards in districts where they're, it sort of identified successful outcomes and looked at for common characteristics in boards. It was like an eight-point thing that was, I thought was kind of interesting. And then a couple of other things just that relate to the superintendent's role, again, for purposes of clarification and kind of distinguishing the superintendent's role from the board's role. So I'll send that to you along with something on eight, our guidelines for using email within the district and practices associated with that. Okay. Next up, we wanted to take this opportunity, there's a lot, I know some of our committees are aware of it and they're, you've seen snippets of it as board members, but there's a lot of important work that's going on at the high school in, in preparation for meeting some fairly significant expectations that all school districts in, you know, in Vermont are striving to meet around areas around personal learning and outcomes and proficiency-based approaches and so forth, graduation expectations. And this work, we're fortunate in our district that in the past few years, we've been able to get support for that work through our Nellie May grant, which is up for renewal this, we're just about to submit the application for a three-year renewal. So I wanted to make sure that, use the occasion of the new board and also to kind of signify the, you know, the importance of, of this work, I mean, is it really has implications, you know, all the way vertically through our system, you know, right down to kindergarten. So it's a good opportunity to kind of get a quick overview of some of this work and, and to hear from the people who are most closely involved in it. So I'm going to turn it over to Amy to share some things about that and then Hal and our
So good evening. My name's Amy Melencamp and some of you I don't know yet, but I'm looking forward to, to getting to know you. And I certainly appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. We've had some exciting work that's been happening over the last years and I, some of the work initially has been behind the scenes, but I think more and more of that work you're going to be seeing very visibly for those of you who have students here at the high school. But hopefully as we, we spread the work through the district, I'm hoping that all students will, will benefit. So I look forward to being able to talk to you more specifically. My goal tonight though is to just give you a broad overview and hopefully introduce you to some of the work that we have been doing over the last years and then certainly make myself available to any of you who would like to come visit. I certainly am very happy to have visitors and so perhaps what I can, can offer tonight is a little bit of a tour of the school, so to speak. It's more of a, a talking tour, but if you can certainly come and, and visit and, and see directly some of the work we're doing. So I am going to work from a, a sort of a one-pager about some of this work that is also posted on our webpage. We try to have an active web presence. So if you want to find this electronically, if you were to look on our webpage on the left, there, there's a section called "About VHS" and so there's a transformation section and this is posted on that, which you might find useful for some of the links that are embedded into this. But basically I would say to you that over the last especially seven years, we've been really charting a new course on how we want to work together in the school and with and alongside our students. And that is a shift that, that takes a lot of re-steering and re-orienting, but I think we're really at a place where we're, we're starting to bear fruit. I, I'd like to particularly draw your attention to the statement of learning that's on the front page. And this is an accumulation and a synthesis really of a lot of work that has been done over the last, as I say, at least seven years. It really came to fruition with the support of our partners with Partner Partnership for Change. And this statement of learning really represents the essence and the foundation of where we are trying to move ahead. And so I bring to you the statement in thinking that it's not only a statement about Burlington High School, but it's a statement really about our district. And I think I would, would certainly welcome and at some point a real endorsement of that, that from the school board because I think we need to be partners in all of this work. But basically, we really are trying to recognize the strengths of who we are as a city, as a community and as a school committed to the future of our, of our, our city. And that is in, in our children. We have this term student-centered learning, which is really the shift that I've been, that I alluded to, that we've been moving from more of a system that you might remember when you went to school where it was a little bit more the teachers leading the classroom. It's more of a passive presence for students where student-centered learning is really all about action and about students being active in that learning. And so there's some mind shifts that have been happening, but as this statement references, we really are, it's all about supporting students being at their best and achieving the highest levels of learning that they possibly can. We've taken the time through a lot of community conversations, some in living rooms of homes in the city. One had about 350 students in this particular, not students, excuse me, community members in this, in this room, really digging in and thinking about what are the, the core things we really want all of our students to achieve towards. And the, the conversations were very exciting. They brought all sorts of different people together and we really focused in on five critical areas that really represent where we want all of our students to have significant work in leaving high school, having significant work that they can demonstrate, that they have achieved, that really positions them well for all sorts of changes in the future. You may have heard the expression that a lot of, a lot of people have, will have seven to eight to nine careers in their lives or different jobs. Well, it's really a lot more now. It could be 13 or 14 and some of It could be 13 or 14, and some of those jobs have not even been created yet. We have no idea what the world's going to look like 20 years from now. Five years ago, we didn't have iPads. And so, you know, the world is changing, but I think the five areas that we've pointed out are skills that will hold true for all of our students throughout their lives. So the critical thinking, problem solving, with students really actively thinking about how they can apply some of the basic skills they learn in classes to really creative opportunities, opportunities and problems. Certainly effective communication. There's been a lot of communication here tonight in a lot of different ways. We want our students to be able to really thrive in that world where they can express themselves in all sorts of ways. The cross-cultural understanding and civic engagement really speaks to the fact that we want our students to be active in the community, really being part of the solution and really thinking about how, how they can contribute and also take responsibility in the community. The whole personal development side, all of our students are different, and so really finding their niches and where they can find their passions is really important to us, as well as that, as how they can apply that in some creative and creative ways where their curiosity is always strong. So as we're shifting about how we organize some of our classes and all, these five areas really are at the forefront of that and are really pushing our teachers to think and create in some different ways the classroom experiences. We are, as you know, a very diverse school, and so this is about all of our students. It's a true commitment, a moral commitment, a real centerpiece of what we're thinking, that every student in the school needs to experience these five areas in a really rich way. So as we are problem-solving, working together and, and really thinking through new ways of teaching and learning, we're trying to think about all of our students in some different ways. And so that's, I guess, what I wanted to at least point you to some directions about, and some specifics about what we've been doing these last years. And so as we, as I moved to the second page, let me just look at that, let's look at this definition of student-centered learning again, because I'm going to emphasize some particular characteristics of this. We use the term in Vermont proficiency-based learning. Some states use the term competency-based learning. We really like the word proficiency in a stronger way. But student-centered learning is about students learning at high levels, learning rigorous academics, but applying them in some different ways. And it's really through the demonstration of that learning in a proficient way that students really achieve at high levels. And this learning isn't a one-size-fits-all, so that term personalized is really an essential feature of student-centered learning. Some students learn very well in a classroom and like being around a lot of students and it's the social setting. Other students, they're much more independent or could be, really thrive in a more individualized program. So as we move ahead and thinking about how students can reach those high proficiencies, we have to think about different formats, different, different alternatives than the traditional classroom, which then leads into this whole notion of anytime, anywhere. Lot of students on the job learn lots of, lots of important lessons, right? And so how can we really connect learning outside of school to inside of school so that overall students are truly engaged? There are some resources that at your leisure you may want to look at that I think sort of play this out, but this direction is not only something that within the school we've really come to believe in, but is a direction that the whole state is going into. So let me just quickly reference Act 77, which is a formal requirement of all high schools in Vermont to be working towards proficiency-based graduation and personal learning plans. All students are supposed to have those by the year 2020. So we're in a transition phase towards that, but we're really well set up for that because we've been having some of those conversations, not only in the last years, but inside classrooms now, thanks to some of the work that we've been doing with Partnership for Change, so that we, we're really on the ground of experimenting with this. And I think we're going to be in a really nice place when it's time to, to really demonstrate to the state that we've met the requirements of this. On the backside, I'll just, I'll just highlight a few things for the sake of time, but again, glad to, to give you a lot more specifics. I put collaboration and teacher learning right at the top because that is, when I mentioned there's been a lot of work behind the scenes, that's where our work has been. Really changing up the culture of the school so that teachers are very much in the thick of this work. It's not me driving the work. It's really a collabora, collaboration of teachers and professionals, as well as we've been really trying to be deliberate in thinking of new ways to include community members and students. Lots of dialogues of, so six, seven years ago, we started this whole journey of looking at collaboration, which yielded four and a half years ago in a vote by the faculty to adopt a professional learning community approach, which is a way for teachers to be in conversation in very deep ways based on data and curriculum assessment and instruction. So we have a late start Wednesdays. This is our fourth year we've been doing that, giving time to teachers to really talk teaching, really talk instruction, really talk assessment, guided by results of common assessments that are happening in classrooms. And this time has really, I think, done the most in starting to shift our culture where teachers talk to teachers. Our faculty meetings have changed up. For instance, today, I didn't run the faculty meeting. We had teachers running the faculty meeting, talking about advisories. You know, we've really tried to, to push, push that whole notion of collaboration and, and think about it in some different ways. We've been fortunate to be able to work with organizations such as Parents and Students for Change and some other people within, within the community that are helping us to think more actively about the parent piece. And so that collaboration is really something that we want to go deeper and stronger with in the next couple of years, which would be a real focus if, if we get some additional funding from the Nellie May Foundation. The teacher learning piece, I'll reference that as well because gone are the days when we can just do like a one-day workshop and expect all teachers to learn something and adopt it the next day and do it, do it, do it that one way. There is no one way. Like every, every student is different, every teacher is different. So there needs to be a multitude and a variety of ways that teacher, teachers can learn. And I'm particularly excited about some of the innovative ways we've been giving time and opportunity to teachers to actually sit back, do the planning, experiment, get feedback from each other. It's, it's not a one-time conversation. It's an ongoing conversation, and I think that in and of itself has been really important. We've been looking, we've been using summertime differently, where teachers are truly planning and, and trying to each year adopt some new practices in their classrooms. We have some teachers who are freed up from, from some teaching time so that they can not only visit other classrooms, but also visit other schools and really take the time to overhaul their curriculum. It takes time. We're fortunate to have somebody like Amy Dixon, who's right here, a graduate of BHS, but who's also very skilled in really helping teachers reconceptualize curriculum, think about how instruction can be delivered in a different way where students are really demonstrating and very much engaged in their learning, and that, those assessments show that. And so having somebody side by side, we've never had coaches in the school. I know K-8 have had reading coaches or whatnot. This is our first opportunity to really have a coach, and I think it's paid huge, huge dividends. We have graduate courses we're using. We meet with Winuski teachers. So we're very much in the thick of this, and so who knows where all this is going to lead the next couple of years, but I think what's important is to have teachers at the table and having them have time to really collaborate and learn together. These next four, four boxes, so to speak, on the page really reference some of the particular initiatives that we have tried to take on in really living the walk of and talk of student-centered learning. I've already mentioned proficiency-based learning. The graduate expectations are those five areas I mentioned on the first page, critical thinking and all. We need to make sure those are more fully defined and really ingrained into all of our courses. So that work is happening right now, and I think for the next two or three years, you know, we're really going to be going deeper with that, as well as the discipline and course proficiencies. When you're really clear with students about what they have to do in order to really gain the skills and knowledge, for instance, in a particular unit, and it makes it much easier for students to really, to really reach those benchmarks. And so I invite you to look at the, the Google Sites that's in that, that middle box there, which has in particular one of our chemistry teachers, Molly Heath, demonstrating exactly what proficiency-based learning looks like and feels like, using her classroom as an example. There's also on that site some other ways that teachers in our school are, have adopted proficiency-based learning practices. So I think that the, the video of Molly is about nine minutes or so, so if you have nine minutes sometime, take a look at it, because I think all of a sudden it'll become clearer to you what we're really talking about. Sometimes we're good at words, and it's better to see an example. So there's a real example there, if, if you'd like that specificity. In that area, though, it's important that, as I mentioned, we have, we have all sorts of students, and some students catch on to some of this stuff faster, other students need different types of supports to see it in a different way. So the academic intervention piece is really important to us. We've been able to add some additional strategies for teaching, especially reading and math, to make sure that we're catching students up as much as possible so they can be at grade level and really have more options and choices as they move through. We're not all the way there, but we're, that's an active area of, of sort of a laboratory area right now. We're really trying to think about some different approaches and really work with students about understanding what's working and what could work better. But that piece has to come along in proficiency-based learning. We can't just, we know that some students are going to need different supports. And that, that blends then over to the personal learning side of things, where technology really has been our friend in this area, that it really allows students to think and look at instruction and find resources and make learning their own in some different ways. And so some of these things mentioned under personalized learning, the ninth-grade teams, lots more choice in coursework, but we have a new senior seminar this year that I think at some point it might be interesting, especially if there's a curriculum committee, I'd love to come and talk to you a little bit more about that. This has been one of our smoothest years ever in having students apply for college, really leaving with a clear post-secondary plan as a result of that class. Students now are doing different projects based on their own interests. It's an, we've learned a lot. It's based on a Champlain College class, but we're, we've learned a lot about that. So I'd like to talk to you more about it because we'll be getting feedback from students and we can process that together. And the main thing, I guess, I really wanted to mention in that area is the advisory program. That is, the concept there, in case you're not familiar with the term teacher advisory or student advisory, I prefer to call it just advisory because it's, if it's called teacher advisory, that puts the teacher at the center. It's not really the teacher at the center. It should be students at the center. But we have reworked our schedule next year so that there will be a 35-minute block of time, four days a week, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday, where about 15 students will have a home base, so to speak, with one teacher for the whole year. It'll be a mixed group of ninth graders, mixed group of 10th graders, so we are doing it by grade. And it will allow some community building in the school that I think we, we need in some new, new and richer ways. And so this opportunity for some regular touching base with a certain group of students, that advisor can be a point person with parents as well, with a lot of the work that's happening in the school, we're really excited about. I've, there's a group of about 12 teachers that are planning the curriculum for this. We have a couple of teacher leaders that are, that are leading this whole work. For instance, this afternoon, they, they presented a curriculum that's going to be a format for this work. Two days of the week, they'll be, be more planned. The other two are more academic study times, but then a teacher can pull out a student and do individual conferences more easily, because we want that individual connection to happen. So that will be something new for us next year, but in all my, all the meetings I've been having with parents, they've been pretty excited about it. And next week, we have a big meeting. We have, we have a student advisory group that's helping to plan this as well, and they're leading an assembly next week for our ninth and 10th graders and another one for 11th graders. So it'll be interesting to have the students present it to students and get feedback because we're, we're still in the shaping part of things, and so we want student voice in that. Which just leads to, and I don't want to take too much more time, but as you can see under student engagement and anytime anywhere learning, we've been experimenting in a lot of different ways for students' interests and choices to become more present in their learning. And so I think it's, let me just end by saying something about our year-end studies program. We, this will be our third year when we reoriented our calendar so that we have, our second semester began right after New Year's, and so it will end at around Memorial Day time, and we move into the last two weeks of school as an intensive two-week student-choice thematic kind of time. We have over 100 classes that students have chosen. Teachers have found their different passions. I have a biology teacher who, who I never really knew, but produces music and, you know, guitar kind of things, and, you know, every, all teachers have their passions and interests, too. So those have come forward in terms of some really creative classes that students can do all day or half the day. Students have brought forward some of their interests. We have a couple of students who are helping to teach this year in that program. Big goal, get out of, get out of school or bring the community into the school. But it's all about teaching in completely different ways and having students experience their learning and apply their learning in different ways. So we're pretty excited about that. We just, all the students just learned their assignments this past week, and so there was a little big buzz around the school, and it's always fun to feel that, the benefits of that buzz where people are already looking towards the end of the school year for that reason, for a learning reason. So I do want to just give a moment to Hal Colston, who's chair of, head of the Partnership for Change, as well as Amy Dixon, who is our teaching and learning coordinator for that, and just to know that, that they really have been able to, as a partner, help us find these opportunities for teacher learning, for collaboration, and to help us test out some of these new opportunities. So Hal, why don't you say a few words?
Sure. Good evening. Just want to give you a little bit of historical context about this grant. Nellie May funded this cross-district effort that the Partnership for Change was created to oversee for a three-and-a-half-year period for $3.75 million. And we're coming to the end of that cycle June 30. Back in 2010, it was October, there was a planning grant that was provided in, in order to apply for the full grant. And we brought together over 100 community members, educators, parents, and students. And they had a conversation about, well, what do we want to see new and different in our schools? How do we want to see school change take place? And what came out of that meeting was, was this idea of student-centered learning. And, and there were three principles that came to bear that we have established this partnership on, and that is equity, so that all students get what they need in order to be successful in their goals, one-to-one technology, that we utilize technology as a tool for accessing information for all students, and community engagement, very critical principle that we're based on. And, and we could look at the establishment of these graduate expectations and other similar work that we have gone to the community and gotten their input and their wisdom to help shape these ideas. So, so this grant, if we're successful for reapplying, which we expect we will be, we're looking at about 40% of the previous cycle level funding, about $1.5 million for the next three years, in order to carry through and finish out this important student-centered, proficiency-based learning work that we've started. So we're really excited about the prospects of continuing this work and getting it into the classroom level, so students and teachers have a different relationship about accomplishing education.
As this Amy said, I am also Amy, and my job within the Partnership for Change is really to help coordinate all of the teacher learning that's driving this change, both here at Burlington High School and also with our counterparts in Winuski. So if you reference your blue sheet in the box called "teacher learning," I'm helping to make a lot of those things happen. I, I think Amy did a great job actually talking pretty in-depth, so I don't really have much to add, other than I think... have much to add other than I think VHS teachers are really experimenting with some new ways of, of doing things. Part of my job is asking them to really be collecting some data along the way to, to see how that's impacting their students. So if you have questions about that, happy to take those either now or anytime in the future. And yeah, I don't think I have much else to add.
So maybe we can just close by saying that we would be very glad to treat you to lunch sometime. I heard that people like food, so we, we serve a mean lunch here and glad to have you come and just be around our students and, but also give us a chance to dialogue a little bit more on, maybe show you some more examples of some of the work that we're, we're trying to do. And with that, thank you for the opportunity to be able to share tonight.
We'll use this opportunity to segue into the, the next item, which is a joint retreat with Winuski. Winuski are, as a district, is our partner in the work that we've been doing there. The board, it was the last year, had, had a joint retreat and we'd like, we've been in conversation about setting up another one. And a particular theme this year would be to start to dive in more, in more in terms of exploring the policy governance approach. And Winuski's had a chance to kind of get, get a start in that area and the opportunity to learn a little bit about some of their experiences and also jointly, you know, inform ourselves that, of what that's all about and, and how we might begin to move in that direction. So it seemed like, you know, a good idea to sort of continue to leverage the value of the partnership that we've created and to do it in this way through a retreat. We actually wanted to float out a, a specific date to see the extent to which folks might have availability and that would be Saturday morning, May 19th. We were thinking about a, I'm sorry, 16th. May 16th, like a, a nine to one, so we'd finish up with, with a lunch and, you know, try to take advantage of the opportunity to learn some more, perhaps directly from some of the folks who are doing this, doing this work and again, as well as get into the area of policy governance a little more depth. We're just, any, have any, any quick sense from folks, the extent to which, how many board members might be available for something on that date? We know that we've got facility in that date and that was one of the reasons why we were kind of putting that out there.
Was it 16th?
Yes. Good, good.
I'm not sure, but I'm just curious, do we have to meet at 9:00 AM on a weekend? That's all. It's just kind of early.
Well, give me some feedback so we can try to, you know, to make this happen. If there's a consensus on the board that you prefer, you know, five to nine in the evening as opposed...
Or 10:00 AM.
A little later in the morning, that's, that's...
Just one hour even.
Friendly amendment?
It's too late for a friendly amendment, it needs to be a formal one.
I'm available on the 16th.
Is there enough people available on the 16th potentially to make it worth pursuing?
Saturday, Saturday the 16th?
Can I request a roll call or the, can we see?
Say your hands, everybody available on Saturday the 16th?
And if you're not sure, can you do this? Like, I'm not sure.
Particularly if it's 10 o'clock instead of the more civilized hour of 10 o'clock as opposed to...
Nine o'clock, 10 o'clock.
So let's, let's tentatively move ahead and see if that's good for the Winuski board, then, then we can, we can start to work with it. That'd be great. Anything else before these folks, we excuse these folks?
I mean, I think it's worth polling to find an alternative date if there's, if everyone's available and that works because it's hard to do this, it's hard to get Winuski and Winuski together. And so I think if you're taking the trouble to get both boards together, it's worth taking the time to get everybody together to the greatest extent possible. So if we could have two dates and see if there's, you know, feasibility of having more people...
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll move through the other items fairly quickly. The, just wanted to flag the, the budget calendar that we, we put together in the cycle for, in being prepared to do some of the legwork that's necessary in, in order to have the budget that we proposed benefit from, from enough time, you know, to, to look, look into items, which means you can't really wait till the fall in some cases to get, you know, identify areas that need study or exploration in order to understand their implications in, in terms of the organization, but also more specifically in terms of, of the budget. So basically, a calendar that we put together basically starts right, you know, the month that, with, with April, with no, you know, we don't let any, lose any time after the, basically you pass one budget and you, you learn to discipline yourself that you take a breath, give yourself a couple of days and you just start all over again, because that's what you need to do. And so what we're proposing now is this phase over the, over this current month, the month of April, where we're inviting input from stakeholders everywhere. If you've read it, seen it already on the front porch forum and spotlight, trying to get the word out to the public in order to give us suggestions, sent an email blast to the entire staff in the district and I wanted to make sure I flagged it for the board. You know, we're asking sort of three basic questions as we look for this input. We're looking for people to identify any areas of need that may require funding in excess of currently available funds, but we're also looking for people to suggest potential areas of alternative funding sources other than local funds. And then finally, we're always looking for opportunities for efficiencies and savings. So we're inviting that, we'll get into a discussion tonight, but I would encourage you as individual board members, we're just going to collect a sort of a, a compilation of ideas and suggestions over the next month and what we'll do is just, is share them with the board next month, all of them, but begin to also, it'll be with our analysis of the areas that seem to be potentially most fruitful for spending some time, devoting some time to doing some research, some investigation, invite, you know, board conversation on that. And it's still a fluid process, but we don't want to wait until, we don't want to lose the summer even as, as an opportunity to do some of the background work, the legwork, gathering information, so forth, that may be pertinent to some items that, you know, we, we suspect will have relevance for the budget conversation. And rather than wait for people to show up at a public hearing and say, you know, we think this is a great idea, give them an opportunity now so that we can say, well, we appreciate that you suggested that, we've had an opportunity over the last couple of months to look into it and here are some of the things we've found and, and be able to, you know, move forward in that direction with the budget process. So kind of just encourage people to emanate with any of their specific thoughts or ideas and as we put together kind of our master list of suggestions to, to get things started. Any questions on that? Just a quick update on the state testing program administration, we're in it. It's a little daunting when you look at, to print out the, the schedule of all of the buildings and all of the, the labbed arrangements for access to students, to computers and all that kind of thing. It's a, it started actually last week and it'll go through the first week in May. So it's no small undertaking. The good news was that the State Board of Education passed a resolution, originally there was some suggestion that the results of this would be used immediately to begin evaluating schools in some way. And they basically passed a resolution specifically saying that the Vermont, excuse me, the Vermont State Board of Education will not use ESPEC scores for the 2014-15 year for the purpose of annual school evaluation determinations. And they included some other references in that. It's, you know, I think it's important and it dovetails with the message from, actually from our own Secretary of Education, the Agency of Education, who has, I think, projected a very healthy perspective on the role of assessment, this, this type of assessment in schools and trying to find that balance where it's healthy but not excessive and acknowledging that, you know, some of the implications of moving too fast in terms of, you know, immediately suggesting that you can, you have the capacity to take all this data and somehow begin evaluating schools immediately with it, as opposed to, you know, creating a period of, of time to sort of really look through it and determine some of its potential validity before you start using it to evaluate schools. So we were pleased to see that action and it took a little bit of the pressure off of what is still kind of a stressful period for everybody in the schools right now. Quick update on the Mari Street property that I know there's been public interest in this and the board has wanted to make sure that people are aware of what's happening. You know, this is a property that we have owned that we listed for sale. The notice of sale by public bid was published locally in, in Free Press, seven days online, Craigslist, Facebook, Twitter, front porch forum. There've been open houses conducted, there've been so far at least eight parties attended and then we're having some individual ones come through. At least one is now coming through and cycling through for a second visit. There is a minimum bid, if I understand correctly, that we're, we're at a hold, holdout for, but where the process is designed to culminate next Monday, the 13th, with opening of the bids to see if we have a successful bid at least equal or exceeding the minimum bid price. So hopefully springtime will, a little bit of spring weather will lead someone to think that this is a great deal. Legislative, to, to update, two pieces of legislation continue to work their way through the process. We've reported on this on one of our committees, one of the finance committee, but one is H361 and that, the one, one of the common aspects of that that received a fair amount of public attention because it included some tax cap provisions. Recent amendment of that, however, created a much more nuanced approach to the notion of a, it wasn't a tax cap, I'm sorry, it was a spending cap, in terms of state spending available to school districts. But what they've done is proposed an amendment that will defer imposition of a cap if, and depending on whether districts in the state can hit, keep their spending below a certain level. And, and it all, you know, it includes some other elements there that kind of, it's a kinder, gentler cap perhaps. And in any event, there are a lot of other structural elements in that legislation that really on an attempt, a sincere attempt to get at some of the questions that have been sort of building up around sustainability of small school districts in Vermont, trying to create opportunities to really get serious about exploring alternatives for, for greater efficiencies and so forth. So the general, I think, consensus is in the education community that it is a bill that's worth supporting, that it's a, a good, a step in a direction to kind of get off dead center on some issues and, and creates a pathway potentially to, to do that. So that, at this point, is, I think they're expected to take it up in the Senate. I think that went past the House, didn't it, 361? I think it's been, it's being taken up in the Senate. The other one is H76, which is the one that had to do with eliminating, eliminating teacher strikes and, and contract imposition, imposition of contracts by school boards. And then it called for a process to dispute resolution process and also some sort of disincentives for dragging the process out. That is going to the floor tomorrow. There's our, our own Burlington delegate Kurt Wright has been instrumental in authoring that legislation and also working on an amendment or a new provision that was designed to create a little bit more opportunity to defer actually this until 2016 and create, use the time available to engage, to create a period of time for school boards association and the state and NEA to engage in, you know, sort of a collaborative undertaking to try to work out an appropriate dispute resolution, however, still not to include binding arbitration. That had been the sticking point all along from the perspective of Vermont NEA continues to be a concern of theirs. I shared with you a position, my position on it, which Kurt Wright asked me to share with him, for, to share with the legislators. And I would encourage you, again, it's not up tomorrow, if, you know, if you have, if it's something that you feel you can support, I think you're, the Burlington delegation, I sent you the email addresses for all of them, would like to hear from you. And, you know, there's a, a chance that there could be enough votes to move this forward. And so it's worth, I think, again, worth supporting particularly to get at this notion of, you know, I think it's regardless of anything else, and, and somebody was quoting saying, you know, there's a place for strikes in, in contract disputes and, and, and that whole process. And, you know, that certainly you can look at situations where that has been the case. My argument as an educator is not with, when kids are potentially the victims. And that's where I think you draw a line and I, I think it's important to sort of highlight that for legislators that, you know, by allowing, one of the few remaining states in the country that really even allows strikes by teachers in the first place and, you know, to, and, and they're pretty much, you know, all it does is, is put school boards in a position of being pressured by parents to just settle it now because their kids, you know, school situations are hanging in the balance. And so it doesn't, doesn't necessarily need, lead to good solutions, it needs, leads at that point to expedient solutions to get the teachers back to work. So in any event, I'll stop there, but it's an area that I think if there's any chance of bringing strikes to an end and it's a fair trade-off not to impose contracts, because certainly that's somewhat anathema to the whole notion of, of collective bargaining. If you can say, well, at some point, I, you know, I guess I'm, you know, I'm tired of this, I'm just going to impose a contract. So I think it's, it's a fair exchange and the idea of creating a period of time to negotiate, to work through a dispute resolution process is a healthy approach. So I think it worth, it merits support. That's all I got.
Thank you. Next up is the approval of the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Okay.
All those in favor of approval of consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nay? So approved. For our new members, just so that you know, this is always published early, so if you have any, go through it and if you have any questions on it, feel free to ask another member, they can explain what they are and if we have to, we can go to Howard and get answers for you so we don't bring it up for discussion here. Next up is the committee reports and discussion of the committee structure membership. Just so everybody knows, I have seven days from today to appoint the committees. If everybody would please just let me know what they want to serve on. Right now, we still have the, the full committee structure, we only have 12 people, so we're down from 14 people down to 12 people. And so it's going to get a little tight. You can serve on up to two committees, but it's not mandatory that you do so. But each committee must have three members. Okay? So it's going to get to be a little gem. Commissioner Kirk?
Mark, forgive me, but I know that last year we had people serving on more than just two committees. Is that policy that says we can't serve on more than two committees?
It is. It is, it's part of the policy that you cannot serve on more than two, two committees.
All right.
Is it policy that we can't serve on more than two of the standing committees? Because would that bar you from being on an ad hoc committee?
No, would not.
Okay, so it's only two standing, you can be, only be on two standing committees?
Commissioner Kirk, we have five, we have five reasons.
Clarification.
Go ahead.
So the policy is that any member who wishes to may serve on two committees, subject to board chair appointment, however, no board member will be required to serve on two committees. No board member will be appointed chair of more than one committee. But nowhere in the policy does it prevent you from serving on more committees.
I thought I said we're only member, only, only serve on up to two. Okay. If you guys are glad for punishment, if you want to do three. So if everybody could, please, Commissioner Stoll?
Also, what happened last year is we had some movement of committee membership during the course of the year. People were added to, is that, is that kosher?
Sure.
Is there anything in the policy that would prohibit the change of the membership, please?
No.
There, there's not. And the, the last time the policy was read and adopted was 2011 and I, I just want to reflect that there was a lot of discussion about committees last year and that overall, I think the tenor of the board, from my personal perspective, was that people weren't really satisfied with this policy and so I think there's an opportunity to refine it, revisit it, and discuss it and figure out what we want to do to...
Any, any part of this, if the board wanted to get together and said, you know, instead of doing it this way, we should do it this way, I'm really open to anything, whatever you guys want to do, okay?
Could I just recommend one thing? You know, I had sent a memo with some suggestions, but I think the one I would just point out for now is, the planning committee is not even listed as a standing committee in board policy. That was one where I would encourage you to let go of that, frankly, that the more normal practice is for, you know, the board superintendent and the board chair to work it out, the agenda, the board chair gets input from the board, superintendent gets input from district administration, and then they put out, you know, the agenda. So, that would at least, I think, help streamline the process a little bit, and since it's not listed as one of your standing committees.
Commissioner Kirk.
I would just ask if a policy committee, you know, be delegated this discussion rather than to begin to have it as a whole board, and that if the board feels that it's a priority to give direction to the policy committee to take it up as a priority?
So, with the policies, so since it's not even, it's, it's an ad hoc.
No, the policy is not an ad hoc.
No, 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 the planning committee is.
Oh, but I'm just saying, the board has a policy about committees, and so, I think, rather than open up a discussion about committees now, to just ask the policy committee to please make it a priority to review the committee policy and bring a recommendation back to the board.
I would appreciate it if the Policy and Governance Committee could return back saying, making sure that we have validity in no longer having a standing planning committee. Commissioner Stoll.
It's not listed as a committee, but it is referred to in the policies, the policy about agenda preparation. So, I think there, I would, or not second, but I would support Commissioner Kirk.
Yeah, so she can determine if that's valid.
And saying that it's, and not just, I don't think, correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner Kirk, but I don't think she was just saying about that one issue. I think she was talking more globally about that, so I would also support a global look at that, as opposed to just asking about that one issue.
We do have the, okay, I'm sorry, we're going to get, going down a path here. So, we good with that, this is on that side of things, just to investigate with.
Yeah, I think it's just standing here for the record, because we don't know who the policy committee is yet, but I'm happy to serve on the policy committee.
Fair enough.
And I'm happy to chair it, but I just was suggesting it be a board sentiment for the record that that committee.
So, if you don't mind, if we can, if we could do a concise committee report of the existing committees that we currently have, anything critical that needs to be brought before the board, if it doesn't need to be brought before the board, I'm fine if you don't. You guys know what, where you need the board involvement. Commissioner Stoll, Finance Committee?
I'll cover it for ten minutes.
Commissioner Kirk, I'll save you for, you can report on the next in a minute. Commissioner Kirk, Planning and Governance, you're going to do it right now, so.
Oh.
You sat on this, you might as well report it. We don't have anybody else.
Nothing for now.
Thank you. Commissioner Seguino, DNI?
Nothing, no.
Man, you got, that's our time, that's our time. Thank you very much. Any other questions or discussion regarding this? So, just give me your requests via email. Commissioner.
Are we going to reconsider committee structure?
Not at this meeting. We all saw that, I think we have to ponder on that, if you don't mind. We don't even know, we might be forced into some of this because we're a smaller group right now.
So, and I'm only asking for clarity for myself and the public, so is our plan at this time to move forward with the existing structure and then engage in discussions about how that might change over time?
That's exactly right.
Okay, that's, sounds good to me.
I have end-of-year goals that would slim things, hopefully. Any other discussion, I'm sorry, I just, before, I know some people might want, any other discussions regarding committee reports and discussion of committee structure membership?
I just, I don't know who was on the committees last year, so could maybe you identify who old board members were, if any of people who have never been on a committee might want to know who to contact.
Yeah, I think it's actually published on board docs, the members of the committees are on board docs.
Okay, thank you. It's actually on the BSD website, if you go to School Board, and it says Members and Committees, the 2014-2015 School Board members and their committees are still up, so maybe if staff could leave that up for another, whatever.
Any other questions? Thank you. Moving on, we have the Infrastructure and Technology Committee Board Action Item. You can share this one, you can run this piece.
I would be respectful of your time, but also mindful of your need to understand a couple of steps that we're taking in continuing to move our construction project forward, our capital construction. We've been working on this for, we've been working on this for four and a half dozen months, mostly with ITC for the capital construction of Edmonds, and the board passed the bonding amount in the budget, but there are two things, two motions that we need to have you address today to keep moving forward in them. Marty Spaulding, our Director of Property Services, is passing out two pieces of information, and we have some, one is a summary of the construction pieces, so I'm going to speak So, the construction summary, did I hit the on/off button? No, the construction summary. The main pieces in Edmonds Elementary is the construction of an elevator to meet ADA requirements, and also improve the safe handling of equipment supplies between floors. We actually had one of our staff moving a file cabinet between two floors and slipped and went down several stairs, so workers' conferences and stuff like that. So, the elevator is, this is where the elevator will be located, so this is the entrance on the south side of the building, north side of the building, so elevator goes up all three floors. The second one is to improve the bathrooms. There are six bathrooms in Edmonds Elementary, they've been there since 1927, and if you go in there, you'll recognize that they've been there that long. You don't even need to see, but complete restructuring of the bathrooms, age-appropriate heights for the ground floor, ground floor, second floor, and third floor, ADA accessibility, easy-to-clean fixtures. Also renovating classroom space on the ground floor of Edmonds Elementary School. This is the space that was the Family and Consumer Science Rooms. Unfortunately, we were putting first graders up on the second floor, and National Fire Protection Association says first graders and kindergarteners should be on a ground-level floor because they're not good at going downstairs. So, this gets to the first graders on the ground floor and the kindergartners. So, renovating two classrooms plus a little bit of work on a third. The staircases in Edmonds Elementary, if you look underneath these staircases, they're concrete and metal, and you see they're rusting through, they've been there since 1927, so we're renovating these two staircases, and also the exterior stairs, which are concrete, which are slip and ice hazards. So, the entry will be coming in at ground level, grade level, removing those. So, again, that's another safety issue. And then, the last part of the main bid is to renovate classroom space on the main floor of Edmonds Middle School. There is a computer lab that's been there for at least 20 years, and we need classroom space because of growth in the district and the middle schools. So, we're going to renovate the lab into a full-size classroom, and it takes up, there's a little bit of additional work around it.
This is the library here.
This is the library at Edmonds, main entrance to Edmonds Middle School. There's also a change on the second floor. There are two classrooms in this space, and by moving some walls and recreating the space, we've got four classrooms.
Two of this is large.
And we'll be making some office space, because there are some offices here, so we'll make some office spaces there. And the last part of the project would be to install sprinklers throughout Edmonds Elementary School. And in the process of installing sprinklers, renovating the ceilings and the light fixtures, putting LED lighting in. So, those were the projects that were bid. The second document talks about the bids that came in and our recommendation. We spent a lot of time going over this with our architects and also with the two current members of ITC, Commissioner Porter and Commissioner Kirk. And so, this relates to the second of the two motions, which is to award the construction bid to Neglian Chase, and the amount is within the $2 million bond, 1.788. And then, we're going to postpone for Phase Two the alternates of doing the sprinkler, pending board approval and additional funding, because that's about an additional $467,000. So, this year, we'll do the main things that we talked about, including the classroom space renovations at Edmonds Middle School, which are going to be partially needed, the elevator, the bathrooms, and the staircases. And then, next year, we'll come back to the board and talk about doing the sprinklers and the ceilings and the lighting. So, that's, that's the, our recommendation. I can speak very quickly to the first one. This is sort of pro forma that we have got the funding to do the bond, but we have to request of the city council that they will actually add the $2 million to their bond, so that the board, can you go back to the one above that, if you would? Thanks. Brooklyn Board of School Commissioners recommend to the city council to authorize and direct the chief administrative officer to pleasure credit to the city by issuing negotiable bonds in the amount of $2 million in fiscal year 2016 for needing needed school capital improvements, as referenced in Section 62 of Brooklyn City Charter. So, this motion to recommend the city council authorize the bonding, second motion to award the bid to Neglian Chase, which was a low bid, this does follow the state statute in terms of awarding bids for contracts. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them.
Do I have a motion to, oh, I'm sorry, just how would Phase Two come about?
Ever, we are able to authorize up to $2 million of bonding each year, and we talk about it in October as part of the budget process. So, if we look at what we're going to be doing next year, we would build the part of Phase Two into that $2 million.
Do I have a motion to accept the recommendation to the city council to authorize bonding for construction?
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nay?
Stephanie and I, thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to award the Edmonds construction bid to Neglian Chase?
Sure.
First, do I have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor, please go ahead.
Can I ask a question? I was just concerned about the criterion, was the criterion for selection only that this was the lowest bid, or do you have other evidence of successful completion of projects without cost overruns?
We, because the bid was over half a million dollars by state law, we had to pre-authorize, so we went through a preauthorization process with ITC. Six contractors met the preauthorization for submitted bids.
And the preauthorization investigates those particular issues in terms of reliability and so on?
They're set of strict criteria, bonding capacity. In addition, the architects strongly recommended that they be able to work with these, with all of the six contractors.
Stephanie's, sorry. Stephanie's question sparked my curiosity. So, it sounds like the preauthorization looks at certain criteria. Do we actually check, like, their references and, like, talk to people who've hired them to find out their satisfaction of how the work was done?
Yes.
Thank you.
Can I, can I just say, when we, when we did the preauthorization of this, Neglian Chase has actually done work for the district in the past as well, as most of the contractors have, and we don't really have a choice but to take a little bit, that's the state statute.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
That's good to know.
When doing preauthorization.
I see.
Yeah. If you've qualified them to be preauthorized, then low bid stands.
We did.
Any further discussion? I had a motion, I had a second, right?
Yep.
I think I had a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? So be it.
Thank you.
I'm not done yet, 9:49 here, yeah. Anyways, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to move to adjourn.
Do I have a second? All those in favor, please say aye. Any against? Thank you.